Filter which I ran, it took exposure every five minutes for the suns and the suns were colorized by the filter. So I didn't have to do anything with post-processing. At totality, it just kept going through. I didn't take the filter off because I had another camera beside it, taking images at the same basic wavelength. So then that camera's purpose was just to take images at totality to get the corona. And so these were already aligned because I didn't move the tripod. I just copied them in Photoshop and layered them. And I did a little bit of, so in addition to that, this is a three-panel panorama vertically. So I did one during totality, I took one at the horizon, one at the eclipse and then one up above, just to give me some headroom up above so I could paste this stuff all over. So that's, that's the story, yep. And the eclipse, the experience itself for this individual was the best experience of my life. I've been to six. I don't, I haven't seen six because I got clouded out a couple of times. But there was never a visual experience like this one before. I don't know what it was about it, was it the transparency, was it the altitude? I mean, it was just at the right position. And you know, you can see, this is how close the clouds got in this location and they never threatened. And so it was crystal clear, everything was sharp. Like when Venus and Jupiter came out, they jumped, they popped. Like in other eclipses, you kind of had to squint or you know, you had to think, is that Venus? This was just like brilliant diamonds in the sky, anyway. So I may be retired from the post-jeopardy. That was the best one, I can't imagine anything better. If you're new, welcome. This meeting has an attempt at being recorded going on and might be posted to YouTube eventually, should it pass.
Put a few more qualifiers in there.
I'm trying. So the agenda is that we'll have some announcements as well. Rick is going to basically do the second half of the evening. He's going to give us a piece on remembering Dave Lane and his eclipse presentation and what's up in the sky. And we'll do that after the break. But first, we're going to have eclipse presentations. And in no particular order, I'm going to just, this is the order in which I created the folders. Kevin?
Can I just say something for part of the announcements?
Of course.
Science rendezvous is coming up on May the 11th. And the center is going to be at the Slush Puppy Place, which is what it's called now. So if anybody would like to help us out and show up, just let me know. We're going to have a get-together meeting on May 2nd at the Slush Puppy Place. But basically, we're going to do the same thing as we did last year, just not talk about the eclipse because it's already happened. Hopefully, we'll have clear weather and sunshine.
Okay, let's start with something easy. Not my computer system.
It will be by the time you're done with it.
So this is Microsoft, I hate Microsoft, I'm moving to Linux. So everybody may have seen this, I posted this in the email chat list. The Weather Network said Monday was going to be several days before. And each and every day, I did this again, mainly sunny, mainly sunny, mainly sunny. A mix of sun and clouds. This is where you start to get a little trembling in your boots because it was good and it's starting to trend downwards. A mix of sun and cloud. And then finally, the day of. A mix of sun and cloud, but that's lying because it was mostly cloud with very little sun. And wow, that's, the Weather Network is not the place to go, I guess is the program answer to this. Some of the things we did there was the old pinhole. And that says Eclipse 2024, in case you can't read it, it looks a little tough. The old pinhole projection on a white sheet. Colanders, how many people have colanders? You can actually see the partial phase showing up there. And this is Kim's trying to record the shadow bands. And I'm just going to skip ahead to this because this is streaming it slow. To the part just before the totality hits. And I've seen shadow bands from some of the others of you and they are really, really prominent. I don't think we saw them at all, did we, Kim?
I have to go back to each individual thing.
Just got so dark and it lasted for a couple of minutes. And yeah, shadow bands, I think they need to be on a big, big plane somewhere. So everybody was outside before the impartial eclipse started, right? You're out there maybe even an hour or two earlier. I was out there and I go, what am I going to do for the next hour or two? Let's renovate the observatory. So that's my deck, it's a roll-off building. And I go, well, I've got this problem with cables. So what I'm going to do is move all of the deck boards over a couple of centimeters each to create a channel where I can put my cables down so I don't trip on them in the dark all the time. So that's why we did very partial eclipse and somehow I also messed up my heart. I didn't like the power disconnect, connect, disconnect, connect issues that accidentally happened. This is our AllSky camera. This is from partial to the end of the truck road. And this really shows you what totality is because it's only going to be one or two frames. So pay attention, it's coming up soon. There's our clear sky, a little hole in the ground, oh, and that was it. So we and Yarker had clear patches for the first partial phase. A big hole opened up for totality and then clouds rolled in for the rest of it. Can I play that again? So cloud, 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 some open patches here and there. This was not looking promising at all. And then more cloud, we're getting closer to totality, we're starting to panic, panic, oh, what's this big hole coming out? Boom. And that's how fast it felt going by. And of course, if you have somebody to enjoy this, that was the whole point of it as well.
They're being watched.
Okay, so that was some fun stuff. One other thing, because you're going to see so many fantastic pictures from the rest of the people here tonight about totality itself. I am going to aim you at traffic. So what I did during the hours in the morning and through totality and afterwards was take clips from Google Maps with traffic turned on to see how bad the traffic was actually going to get. So this is at 9:00 AM and it shows the Kingston area, cars always closed. Grass Creek Park, you can't see it here right now, but it will show up. This is 10:00 AM, still, everything is green, things are going good. There's a little bit of delay right around Grass Creek Park where the city of Kingston held its biggest event. This is at 11:18 in the morning. And again, still slight traffic back at the Grass Creek Park. Everywhere else is green, green, green. 12:03, we're getting closer and we're starting to see some red traffic. There's not moving signs around Grass Creek Park. But again, north-south roads, all green, east-west 401 is green. This is at 1:33 PM. And again, this traffic jam is starting to get worse and worse and worse. Downtown Kingston looks pretty good. Fort Henry, Queen's University, all that. 14:28, quick, can anybody tell me what phase this is?
First contact.
Okay, after first contact. Still people on Highway Number 2. Not getting in anywhere. A little bit of traffic, looks pretty normal. And 15:42, after totality. Again, huge slow traffic light ups here, nothing else in the rest of Kingston. So the great 500,000, which the guy, Kingston's emergency service guy apparently got by reading other people's experiences of eclipse in 2017 and multiplying it by four. So then I did the same thing for Ontario and Toronto down in Lowerland, Montreal, Sherbrooke, Magog, some of our members went to, and Lake Megantic. Is this the lake here in Northern?
Yep.
I was going to ask you why you guys went that far instead of stopping off at Sherbrooke?
Because it was clearer.
Oh, okay, so the weather forecast confirms that. So this is 9:00 AM. This is 10:00 AM.
North of Vermont, because we talked to people that came up through Vermont and stuff, New Jersey and stuff. And they said there was quite.
I was not going to talk about the interstates, but yes, they're really blatantly backed up already. And also keep your eye on Toronto, Mississauga, Hamilton area. 11:18, again, more and more red all through the upper states. Montreal, southbound, is starting to get bad as well. And had the Hamilton, Toronto-Hamilton, rather than the other. 11:03, if you're stuck in this traffic jam, I don't think you're going to get a chance to see anything. Again, all of the state, interstates are just jam-packed. And one out of Montreal is getting bigger. 13:33, so again, just before partial. The GTA is looking like it's out of Stanfield. Vermont, New Hampshire, and New York are still pretty bad. Montreal seems to be just, where are these guys trying to get to?
Downsens.
They're going to go through the city. We're not going to make it. 14:28. The entire GTA area is insane, but Niagara Falls doesn't look bad at all. That was supposed to be one of the bad ones, right? And Montreal was just, oh, there's a few road closures now. Traffic in the US seems to be slightly having a bit. And 15:42, the big event is over. And now Montreal is calm, the states are calm, that's calm. One thing I forgot to point out was the 416, this is still southbound here. Let's go back an hour. 416, the Ottawa to Kempville is busy. Ottawa to Kempville is busy, going back an hour later, and so on and so on. Okay, I think, is that everything we have for today?
Didn't go long enough.
Yeah.
Well, it was five hours for someone that I know to get from 416 back to Ottawa.
I can believe it. And so one of the last things is that I don't think there's too many other radio astronomers in the room. Kim and I have got a radio joke set up. That's the two tall masks in the background, two sets of tall masks, masks. And there's a big dipole antenna and we listen to the sun, we listen to Jupiter. And one of the things we wanted to do before the eclipse came along was to do some renovations here. This is Serenity, my observatory. There's an AllSky camera on that post. There's a bunch of power adapters for the Raspberry Pi, for the AllSky camera, for the radio joke. And they're all in one box. And you know it's not a good idea to put radio frequency sensitive equipment next to their wall with more power supplies because it's just a big noisy thing. So I wanted to split that up and I also wanted to roll the observatory farther off the end here because I've got the rails, I just have stuff in the way. So that was another renovation project the day before the eclipse. Was the AllSky camera got moved off to the side. New stops got put in because there were no stops under rail. And the last thing you want to do is see your observatory blowing the wind off the rails. And then the power supply and the radio joke equipment were separated out into two plastic ammo boxes. And this is the one with a timer for the heater for the AllSky camera dome, one for the Raspberry Pi, one for radio joke. And then the other box is the radio joke receiver all by itself. And in the future, they're going to be separated even more to help them try and reduce that radio frequency interference. So it was a big project across North America and I know the radio joke, radio telescope operators saying, what's going to happen during the totality? And here is our data plot from the start. On the left-hand side, I kind of see one, first contact. Over here is last contact. T totality is in the middle. And quick, what time was totality, everybody?
Depends where you were.
3:20.
You can't really see anything obvious here except maybe this little dip after totality. So I'm going to cheap and show you the zoomed-in part from 3:18 to 3:26. And totality is in the middle of this. And to my eye and everybody else's look at it, nothing happens. There's no observable effect on the radio telescope from totality. And this tall thing here is just one of the regular ionosphere probe transmitters. It sends out a beep of noise and they listen to it come back and analyze how it changes because of the ionosphere. So as Rick said, that was a horrible disappointment and I wouldn't pay, what was your exact quote?
I do recall.
Money to go and see this if it was cloudy. Because radio works through the clouds and we're hoping that we wouldn't get clouded out. Okay, I think that's it.
Can I, can I ask a question?
No.
What was your?
What do you think this is, a public average session?
What did you, what did you want to see?
Anything, we don't know. That's the whole point about experiments. You do the experiment, you look at the data and try to come up with an explanation for it. It could have been from the cooling of the, Kim did temperature experiments and we experienced a temperature drop at ground level. And so the theory goes that perhaps that traveled all the way up to the ionosphere with temperature changes. Temperature changes in the ionosphere, change of layers, change reflectivity, change signals, all that kind of stuff, so.
The temperature was, it was 17.2 before for that.
And during totality, it went down to 12. Nope, that was mine, I didn't know you had one.
It's exactly the same model in there.
Oh, well, there you go. Mine works.
That's funny.
Kevin, what are shadow bands?
I don't know, what are shadow bands?
I think they're.
Something just before totality.
During, during the final extinguishing of the sunlight.
Yep.
The light coming through the atmosphere is affected by scintillation in the atmosphere, the same way a star twinkles. And it casts a shadow that vibrates. And you see that on white objects.
Interference patterns, perhaps? Did everybody notice how much sharper your own body shadow was as the sun got smaller and smaller? It went from a big source to a point source, right? So then, once a minute you go to a point source, you start getting these weird quantum particle versus wave things going on, right? Somebody else had a question?
Yeah, I did. Why is the moon ineffective as well in the radio that you're concerned?
What we were picking up here was null. If there was an X-class flare going off that we would have picked up, then that may have had an effect on it. But the moon, the sun was very quiet. Very, very quiet.
So does this mean that your radio emission is maybe coming from the corona rather than the sun's surface? So it never really got blocked out?
Don't know the answer to that. Most of the cases of things that we pick up are from flares on the sun. So X-class flare puts out a big thing. I don't think the corona gets affected immediately, it takes time for that to happen if any CME is pushing into it. But as far as I know, the radio comes directly from the spot and.
Yeah, but your steady-state stuff, I don't know where that comes from.
The sun was very glass.
Yeah.
Very glass.
So maybe that level that we're looking at there is just noise.
Yep, background.
So if it was so quiet, why were there such glorious promises?
There weren't, really, those are pretty tame in H-alpha compared to.
The bottom?
Yeah. Look at H-alpha every single day for years and years and you'll probably think that that was minor.
So when, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
When we had our last Zoom, I think, Les was on the Zoom, I'll do the last thing now, Roger.
Sure.
And posted a link to his YouTube account where this video is, but it's, I thought, Roger and I both think that we should have a look at it tonight. I can't remember how long it is, I think it's about six minutes, five, six minutes.
Okay, Les who?
Les Nagy.
The honorary member of our.
Okay, that's not going to work. Do you have VLC installed on there?
I have nothing installed.
Okay, you talk to it for a sec and I will load in some new software. I don't think you're online here.
So all this, something gets lost in haystacks. Last thing you.
Yeah. I have 64 gigabytes of one of them.
Now they've got a four-digit PIN?
Yes.
Just a lot.
DLC does not require any stinking Microsoft codex.
The other thing I was going to comment on is the shadow bands, I think, are somewhat like the ripples of light that you see on the bottom of a swimming pool.
Yes. Yeah, I've had that thought as well. Because the atmosphere behaves as a fluid.
Yeah.
So it's a similar behavior.
And I saw yours.
But you didn't see them?
On Facebook and then when you were pointing at them, I saw those too. But I don't know if we caught them because I've got to take that.
Unfortunately, my camera didn't catch all of them, it only caught the last 10 seconds or so.
They were going on. Oh, look at this. Look how dark, here we go.
Oh yeah, it's over the mountains now. This is in Lake Megantic, Quebec. Yeah, I saw a bit of that earlier. Here it comes, the shadow band.
Oh, shadow band, yeah.
I see the rippling at this.
Holy shit. Oh my god, holy shit.
And they're all off-camera too.
Look at Venus.
Not yet, it's still not completely covered.
There we go. Holy god.
Okay, filters.
Filters off.
Filters off. You can take filters off.
Look at the prominence.
Yes. Oh, Roger.
This is more spectacular than we had in the grand hall.
It's darker.
Yeah.
Oh my god.
That's a nice silhouette effect.
That's incredible. Incredible.
All those prominences, holy crap.
I'm going to have to edit that for YouTube. There you go, that hole. Starting to get light now. All right, you were close to the center line, this is a much longer.
One prominence is huge.
Ours is over already.
Okay, number telescope is mine. Wow, those prominences.
Look at them, man.
He's the most spectacular thing.
Thanks for pointing out the. Okay.
Those are cool.
Yeah, I think I thought of it.
It was three minutes, were you getting bored?
Three and a half.
No.
That prominence is so beautiful.
And who is still is more than five minutes. Exactly.
Now we must be coming out soon. Get ready for filters on.
Here we go, time to rinse it. Here we go. Seven rings.
Filters in. Filters in. Everybody use glasses, filters in.
Look at your son, eh?
He's just so excited. So how many of you packed up and went home after this?
She doesn't tell.
How many people packed up and went home right now?
Oh, most of them, an hour after this, I was probably the last person.
No, no, after totality.
Yeah. Within two hours, it was probably.
Immediately after totality, did a lot of people leave? Oh my god.
And I got the corona and everything else. I'll focus the eyes.
Can I just ask where it was at?
Lake Megantic, Quebec. And I guessed a thousand to 2,000 people.
Yeah.
Ballpark, I don't know, I have official numbers, but maybe something like that. Mike? You want me to put it in slide mode?
Sure you can. I just thought I'd get some of the cartoons off the web that I saw and incorporate them in the box. Some of them are on Facebook, some of you may have seen them already, but I just put them in here. My wife and I were in Arizona and we delayed our trip to come home to go to Texas to watch the eclipse. That was the plan a year ago. We booked our hotels in San Antonio, Texas. And it wasn't, it just caught the edge of the eclipse zone, but we were going to go and rendezvous with a fellow named Peter Jenneke. For those who don't know, he's been in the R A S C since like the 1970s. And another fellow who was a NASA training pilot, he did talk at one of our RGA in 2001 in London. And basically, he had invited Peter and Peter sort of invited me and come to watch the eclipse. That was the plan, Plan A, so.
Nope, left and right, left and right.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
That makes fun of some of the people telling you to stock up on food and water and everything else. You thought we were going back into the toilet paper in case we loaded the pandemic. So I thought this. So I thought this would be funny to show at least, so.
My favorite.
This is kind of true for many of us. We did okay, though. I was worried about it, though. So this was Plan A, we're gonna be down at Kerrville, Texas, and we were staying outside of San Antonio, and we're gonna take a leisurely drive on the fifth of, whereas we were supposed to leave Tucson on the fifth, so. But on April Fool's Day, this is what we saw, it was eighty-one percent chance of cloud cover. I have to thank Malcolm for bringing this pivotal weather chart up, because I started using that pretty extensively. I sent Peter Jenneke an email and said, hey, it looks really bad for the eclipse. I don't know if Texas is the best place to be, and he said, well, I'm already in Arkansas, and it'll clear, and it'll be good for the eclipse. He got to see it through a crack in the clouds is what the story was, but so after looking at this, we started packing up on April second, and on April third, we decided to head out. This is what it looked like in the morning of, you know, April third, sixty-six, sixty-eight percent cloud cover. And we said, we're gonna drive up to Amarillo, which is on our normal drive home. So we did the trip to Amarillo, got up there, and started looking at weather again in the hotel, and in that morning, Texas looked lousy. We were trying to keep our options open for Texas still, but it still wasn't good. And we decided we would, basically, when I looked at the St. Louis area, this is what I saw, Evansville, Carbondale is what we were planning on, six percent cloud cover, eight percent gloomy, and Indianapolis, six percent. So we said, we drive to St. Louis, and we checked in the morning, and we were able to get hotel rooms there. So we said, let's go to St. Louis, we booked ourselves into the night, and we'll try and find a good spot to set up and watch the eclipse. So that was Plan A. We got in there, that night it was at sixteen percent in Carbondale. But, so we did the trip to St. Louis, eleven-hour drive, and the next day we had had a day off, so we went and saw the one big tourist attraction they have is the Gateway to the West. And it's almost two hundred meters high. You can go up in it, they have these, it's like a giant clothes dryer, you get inside of it, three hundred people, and it takes like, and there's about four cars of this, they take you up to the top, and you can look out at the city and the Mississippi River, that's the Mississippi River in the background. So that's how we spent the following day, just touring around, but we did the riverboat cruising, you know, in the Mississippi, but it's not really a riverboat, it doesn't have the paddle wheel working, it's just like a placebo. And they just show you a bunch of bridges and factories. So I would say, don't do the riverboat. Anyway, the next morning, or that evening, we got back from seeing all our sights and stuff, we're looking at the map, and down around Carbondale, thirty-nine percent, twenty-four percent Indianapolis, and we're thinking Kingston's about the same at that point in time, why don't we just go home and watch it? So we waited till the next morning and made the final decision, but you can't get hotel rooms, because the road going home is on the eclipse path, but aren't they? So we basically had to talk about, are we gonna drive fifteen hours to get home? We might be able to get a hotel room in London or Toronto, but so, and that's what we were looking at at the same time, Watertown, thirty-three, Kingston, thirty-six percent, and then up where we live, right around, right in here, it wasn't too bad, we thought we could even watch it from our backyard. It did get worse, though. So we're driving back, and my friend Kevin, who is good, his friend was, is an astrophysicist who, I'll show you a few pictures of that, he was saying he's going to Quebec, to Magog, and he was gonna watch the eclipse from there. He said, okay, that's kinda neat. I said, we're planning on driving to Sherbrooke. We get home, if it's not good where we are, we're gonna drive to Sherbrooke area. And my wife says, well, when you're driving by, he lives in London, stop in, I'll make a wish, so that was what he did on Sunday, so. Well, we did drive back, we were, when he did say, send me that text, should I stay or should we? We were already almost to Toledo, Ohio, but anyway, we did the fifteen-hour, fifteen-and-a-half-hour drive, and we did, we did okay, we just took turns driving. So that's Kevin, my friend with the Apollo shirt on, and that fellow is Jamie Matthews. Oops. He's an interesting guy. He is. He got the Order of Canada, and I got a slide for that. He, that's him with making the most telescope back about fifteen, eighteen years ago. It was a suitcase-sized space telescope, it was Canada's space telescope, Peter Serrano made the optics for it, and that's Jamie. And while he was working on that, he was in Vienna, Austria, some of the data processing was over there, he had a stroke, that's about ten years ago, and he was found face down in his hotel room, and he was in a coma for two weeks, in Vienna. And he's lucky he survived, and that ended his career, he could not talk for a long time, and he can't, still can't use his right arm all that well. So, really nice guy, but an interesting character. He went to the Order of Canada wearing a T-shirt that looked like a talks, what do you know it is?
He wore a kilt a lot.
Yeah. So this is on the seventh, Cornwall's Clear Sky Chart, it looked pretty dismal for the Monday, my daughter-in-law was sending me messages, how's it looking for the kids, and I said, well, it doesn't look good, you should come out to Magog. My friend Kevin sold us his hotel room, because he bumped in with his friend Jamie, so that, we ended up leaving on the Sunday night to get to Magog ourselves. It worked out really well, we were lucky, actually. The next morning, Cornwall improved a little bit, there's some hope for Cornwall, you know, right around totality time, it still could be some cloud, but they did get to see it. And Grandy is a lot better, not too far a drive from Borlheim and Morrisburg, but that's what the Clear Sky Chart looked like there. And Magog's was similar, it was a little bit better, but not as good as what Malcolm had and Roger had up in the Atlantic. We did have clouds, but it didn't get in front of the sun until, till pretty much when the whole eclipse was over, not just totality. So that's the place where we booked the hotel room, it's a golf resort, so we could set up on the golf course anywhere there, and just setting up the telescope in the mouth in the morning, I was the first person out there at eleven o'clock. My wife and I, with the picture, we were already doing some solar observing before the eclipse started. But it was a nice spot, another cartoon of Snoopy's. So it's time to watch the eclipse, pretty much. I did make some mistakes. My first mistake was I should've shot in wrong, I shot it in J V. And so I can't stack my images, I don't know if there's a way to do it with J V, but I can't stack my images, and I couldn't do anything to them really, so I kinda stuck with the images I got. And the other one is, I should've used a, I shot at ISO four hundred, I should've been down around a hundred, because when I went up in speed, it wasn't enough to get those prominences really good, so.
So these are things we say, better next time, which means you're going to the next one, right?
Yeah, and I should alert it from the time before, but I forgot already, right? So anyway, so that's us getting ready to watch the eclipse. My wife did some videos, so that's the first contact, just after first contact. Spot, there's a couple sunspots. And that's coming up on second contact, and.
Ooh!
And that's the shots I got, like I said, there's not much I can do with them to get the prominences up, you can see them, there's one there, there's one down here.
If you make masks around them.
Right.
To protect them. What you can do is then, you can invert it, so that just the prominence has a mask around.
Oh, okay.
Or like everywhere else but the prominence is protected, so then you can saturate or pull the red out.
I don't have any of the Adobe stuff either right now.
Well, that's how pics inside, I don't know.
I haven't downloaded that yet. I got the trial version, but it ran out, so.
It sounds like somebody is asking you to send them some pictures.
So I kept, I did the bracketing, and I did the best I could on the focusing, and I got, you know, some good corona around it. I just pulled through these, they're all, everybody's pictures are all the same. It was like an adventure driving all the way back, we had one day to catch our breath, but our friend stopped in, and then we ended up, you can just see the little prominences right here at the bottom, there's another one here, just me and I love it. There's two that are all the same. There's the Diamond Ring. And then it's just about done, it's the fourth contact. So that was, that's my pics more than other things. And at the end, I learned this in another eclipse, have a bottle of cheap champagne, and have a toast, so we went to Costco before the eclipse and picked up some champagne. Jamie and myself and my wife's hands there, taking clips. Pictures of my grandkids, gotta show them in there, now watch, this is in Longsue, watching from their deck. The oldest guy here is, he really likes astronomy, and that's my other son at my house, he went to Morrisburg to watch, you can see the clouds overhead, and my granddaughters. And that's my grandson, I think he nailed the eclipse really well. This is junior kindergarten, the day after.
Awesome.
And we've got a couple videos, will they play if I just hit them?
Probably, yep.
So we had the eclipse out, getting it set out, and I, everybody subdued here.
Yep.
And that's my wife with her iPhone, was trying to capture it. See the lights on in behind, the streetlights are on?
Yeah.
And you can see the clouds, how high they are, they're almost the Beavis. And well, look at the guy driving down the road.
Yeah.
Driving the whole bay.
Who drives during totality?
He's probably the one yelling at the cloud.
Only allowed to do that if he covers up his headlights with some red film.
Yeah. I think this is, I think this is the next one.
Yeah, yeah.
Not as good as Lex's video. That's the last one.
That's all I said.
I never thought to use Binoculars to look at the prominence.
I used my dog.
Wow. That's three or four things to remember for the next total eclipse.
I'm gonna make some notes. Tuck them in my solar stuff, my solar filters.
Epic, epic journey, Mike. Holy moly, you must've driven like forty hours.
Thirty-seven to get home from Tucson.
Yeah, wow.
Where we're supposed to have a leisurely drive to Texas.
Do you have to go back to get your stuff?
Um, it's not really nine forty, is it?
No.
It's seven forty, okay.
Seven fifty-four, I've got.
That's what I've got, so fifty.
Okay. Shelley, would you like to?
Sure. So we had hoped, beyond hope, to stay home, because we were gonna get two minutes, roughly two minutes and twenty seconds worth of totality in our backyard, so we had our solar scope set up, and two refractors, and we were gonna put stuff on the deck, and then, you know, Friday it wasn't looking good. Saturday it was looking worse, Sunday we decided, okay, we gotta get Stefan, go on Google Earth and look for a place for us to go. So we found a place called Sutton Quebec, that had a, it was a really pretty town, it was worth the drive just to see the town, it was beautiful. And freshly poured, just for us, concrete basketball court at this outdoor park, so it was really white, so you could see the shadow bands. Anyway, these here, I'm just gonna open this up, just to show that, these pictures here, I have enough to make, you know, a composite. Haven't done it yet, because I gotta figure out how, but my plan is to put totality in the center, and then at twelve o'clock, six o'clock, nine o'clock, and three o'clock, have one of the other phases, you know, like the Diamond Ring, Beavis, Bees, whatever, and the other phases in between, and I'm going to make it into a clock. I'm gonna have it printed on acrylic, there's a place that I can send it in and have it print, and it has a really nice frame around it on the back, that should house a clock motor. Anyway, I just thought that would be a really cool way to present my pictures.
Can you show us some of those blown up?
Yeah, I am. I'm trying to get back to the up arrow.
I don't need to work composite, copy.
That one? Yes. These ones. Um, so that one, it's just showing the prominences really. And these are just single images, I didn't stack anything.
So you see those arrows? You can, no, right there, yeah, you can use that to scroll.
The ones disappear, yes.
And you can make a full screen too.
I thought I had to open them all first before I could.
So it's over on the right? There we go.
So because our, I'm not doing anything. So much for that idea.
You have to hold it right in the middle of the arrow?
Yeah, or try the remote presenter and just click on the button.
Or she's gonna do it.
I'm just gonna go back and do the way I was gonna do it, because that way.
Too many men, tell them you want to do.
Anyway, we didn't get enough of our longer exposures, we didn't get any, like Stefan had bracketed to do, you know, one one thousandths, one two fiftieths, one five hundredths, one second, two seconds, and four seconds, but none of our longer exposures worked out. So to do an HDR image, to get all the different parts, you know, and more detail in the prominences, haven't been able to do that yet. I'm thinking if I go back and stack, because I have at least five of each of these, I can stack those, and then do an HDR and try and get something a little bit better. None of our wide-field shots turned out, not one, so don't know why that happened. But anyway, we ended up in this little town in Sutton Quebec, it was beautiful, there was about sixty people there, we had our Spumonti Bambino to do the toast afterward, and there was people from Maine, and New Jersey, and Vermont, and lots of people from Quebec, and when you were showing the traffic coming down from Quebec, people who, we got there really early, because we left our place at just after six AM, so we were there and set up, you know, setting up before ten, but people who got there around noon said that the traffic coming down from Montreal was horrendous, and we just flew them. Going home was a little bit different, a little bit more challenging, a little longer drive, and whatever town we went through, just before we got back into Ontario, Tim Hortons was black and the lights were off, and nobody was home. So was Pizza Hut and a few other places, like I, I don't know if they closed up, because you know, the eclipse was coming, but we found that very strange, but we are very glad that we decided to bail by staying at home in Athens and go to Quebec. We took my brother with us, he had never seen an eclipse before, this was likely gonna be the last chance he ever had. So anyway, we went, we had a great time, had great views, a little bit of cloud on the horizon only, nothing came up in front of the sun till well after, so we got lucky that way. Yeah, it was a great day. Oh, and somebody, one of the Americans was doing experiments, so the temperatures are in American degrees, seventy before the eclipse, like before totality, and it went down to fifty-eight during totality, so I thought that was a pretty substantial, like we got cold and chilly and.
Yeah, same with us.
And had to put our coats back on, I don't know, we saw, the coolest thing was seeing the shadow leave, because you could, you know, I didn't really pay attention to it coming, I was busy looking up, but leaving, you could see it creeping up the mountain, Mount Sutton, and going off, and it was really cool to see that aspect, though, because I don't remember witnessing that so much back in twenty seventeen over the cornfields. There was no bugs this time to sing, but the birds did get quiet, like the last one, you know, it was in August, so we could see the fireflies coming out and crickets, we could hear those, but I think probably at home, I would think that the peepers would have started singing.
Someone told me that happened for them.
Yeah.
I don't remember who told you that.
But where we were, there weren't any peepers, but.
No, same here.
At home, down our road, they are so deafening loud.
I can't remember, geez, someone's, I remember somebody saying they heard the peepers.
Yeah.
Oh, Andreas's wife, Bonnie.
Okay.
So she's near Coburg.
Okay.
Got clouded out. They were sitting on a porch, watching, watching, waiting, hoping, and then she mentioned that when it got dark, she heard the peepers.
Yeah.
So at least, she got something.
So, yeah, so where we're.
So she didn't go to Texas?
Where we went, we had.
No, she couldn't.
Three minutes and thirty-one seconds of totality, so that was pretty substantial, especially compared to, at home, we would've had, we would've seen it get dark. So that was pretty substantial, especially compared to, at home, we would have had, we would have seen it get dark. And the streetlights come on.
Yeah.
Because that's about how cloudy it was. We had, our neighbor sent us texts and we saw them. We're really glad that we made the drive. And we went just, I think we ended up going just far enough that we got an excellent view.
Awesome.
Some people, I think, um, do you know Marie Fisher?
Yep.
She ended up driving to Cornwall, because I texted her. Because she was supposed to go down to Mexico and I said, hey, you know, the next day, well, we ended up not going, you know, blah, blah, blah. So she says, I ended up in Cornwall. I said, you were like fifteen minutes from my house on the four oh one. She could have come with us.
Yeah.
But anyway, she said it was pretty good in Cornwall, so I don't know.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's, that was our adventure.
So, um, as part of outreach, um, you know, we, we talk to our friends, I consider that outreach. I mean, it's, it's, uh, um, you know, trying to explain to people what, uh, what an eclipse is and why you should see it. I have a friend of mine from work, so, you know, last time I was actually in, in his physical company was at least ten years ago. But we keep in touch by, you know, social media and stuff like that. And, um, you know, he's asking me questions, he's got a young family, he lives near Bathurst and Lawrence, kind of in Toronto, like right in the center of the city. He's asking me, where should I go, which way, like should I go Niagara, should I go east, should I go southwest? And, you know, we kind of, I gave him information, he was trying to get his, his young family in position to see something. He didn't know what it was going to be. Um, and then he says one time, I'm thinking of Fort Erie. Then he says, no, I'm heading east, wish me luck. And April eighth at three thirty-three, I get a text. Guy, I have no words, that was incredible. When's the next? Let's go! So, anyway, yeah, amazing to, to get that kind of feedback from the guy.
Still going on the news, you see people talking about it. It's like it did make an incredible impression on a lot of people.
And this is, this is a guy who I, I, when I worked at, uh, at the bank, um, I also did Starfest. And everyone there knew that I did Starfest and just for fun, they used to call it space. In a teasing way. So, um, he, he completely flipped here. Instead of, you know, being on, on the, uh, on the somewhat sarcastic side of things, he actually took it seriously and, and he made it. And I'm very happy for him, it was, uh, it was awesome. And there are some other stories like that too.
I, I went into one of the schools I supply teach at and I did a presentation to the school before the eclipse, you know, to teach the kids the safety and explain what it was all about and stuff. And then I went back to the school after the eclipse and went around and talked to the kids in the classes.
The day of the eclipse, we had sixty people basically, that we were the experts there. So, um.
There's a little bit of that going on in Lack McGantik, wasn't there?
So Athens wasn't a great day for it, but some of the kids had gone to family in Kingston and stuff and seen it. And some of the teachers, you know, teachers, the real deal, that's big deal. And then after witnessing that same thing, like, I can't even describe it, right? Just, you know, and you tell that to people, that until you go through it, it's hard to explain what it's like. And, and, and there's, I'm, I'm so glad that you came in and told us, because I wouldn't have been that worried about it. And I went out and, yeah, I can't, can't believe it.
Someone mentioned champagne.
Yeah.
In this, in the storm chasing community, and I was with my storm chasing partner, Charlie Sabatot, because he is an absolute savant when it comes to finding initiation points for severe storms. But, so we both follow the same models and we kind of talked about it and we worked it out. But I eventually made the call that I was going to Lack McGantik before he was ready to commit. And in, uh, in the storm chasing world, if you see a tornado, the, the tradition is that you had a steak dinner. Uh, so we combined instead of champagne and we had a steak dinner on eclipse, uh, eclipse evening for our celebration. And, uh, that was, that was pretty cool. So at this point, um, I'm gonna put in Bruce's, um. Come drive. And, oh, oh no, I don't want to take that.
Sorry, it's a, it's a moon dog. It's, you know. Maybe I'll just say a few things just before the ceremony.
No!
So I just wanted to, just say briefly that, um.
You worry too much.
Yeah, just what you do.
Sorry, wait. My, okay. I just wanted to share a little bit about some of the outreach that I was involved in. The, I don't have direct pictures, um, because it's not really appropriate in the school to do that. But, um, uh, so there were, I had two major outreach opportunities. One was with the Catawba Quilining Center at, uh, which is part of LCDI. And the second one was Centennial School. And so at KLC, um, we had, um, planned ahead with the teachers, um, you know, what would be appropriate. And, and so we actually had, um, we had several activities, uh, which I think I spoke about, uh, maybe at a previous meeting. Which, uh, you know, just to sort of get a feeling for what the, uh, what the, uh, playing with the balls of different colors and so on, to get the feeling for what is an eclipse and, uh, acting it out. And this was actually very, um, the, the, the students were really quite serious about that. Each range from both, uh, I'd say eight, uh, sorry, about grade eight, grade seven, eight, up to about grade twelve. And, uh, the, uh, so we would act out the, um, positioning of various, um, uh, sun and moon of planet Earth. Uh, the second activity was a, um, based on a, it, it's, uh, uh, the discovery of the universe. I think so many people here probably were watching, so I went to one of their, um, uh, opportunities for a tutorial. We made a, uh, an eclipse to scale. So we had, um, so it was the moon and the Earth are seventy-five centimeters apart. And the ratio decided, so I used a, uh, a golf ball for the, uh, for the planet Earth and, uh, and, uh, and the full size of a marble or smaller than that for the moon. And so these would be planted on at seventy-five, uh, centimeters apart. And, uh, so unfortunately, the sun was not really bright, the day we were doing it. But we had, um, so I did have some flashlight for the sun. And the idea was to position the sun, uh, sorry, yeah, position yourself with respect to the, uh, the sunlight. Uh, so you could first of all see the shadows of both the moon and the Earth on a, on a screen. But then to actually get them to come together and you see it clip, the shadow of the moon on, on the Earth. It's tricky, it was difficult, even for that, and so the kids had a great time, um, at working on those two activities. And then, um, the final activity actually was a, uh, we made a big circle, uh, everyone holding onto rope. And the question was, why don't we have an eclipse every month? And, uh, so it was interesting, um, so one of the kids actually came up, well, so maybe the moon's orbit, it's just a little bit out of sync. And presto, that was the answer. It supplied degrees of, of northward. And, uh, oh, we, uh, just talked about how, acted that out, you know, with a, I don't know. So, uh, anyway, that was, uh, a very excellent experience, really, to share. Okay, so, um, uh.
Do you want to give some?
Uh, can I, just, okay.
I think it's a good, go forward and backward.
Um, yeah, so, um, I was, uh, on the day of the eclipse, um, I was shooting, uh, with my Canon, uh, two hundred, uh, one thirty-five, knowing in prime lens. And, uh, I was shooting in JPEG and RAW. And, uh, I wasn't, I didn't really know what I was shooting. I knew I was focused on it, I could see it in my, uh, little screen and that. But, um, I had no idea how good it, uh, it was, the equipment values. But, uh, I was really quite excited to actually, especially with RAW. This image actually came out, you know, really so bright, but with RAW, I could bring it out. And we actually, uh, discovered, we actually did get the diamond ring and possibly even a little bit of that, that was great. And, uh, yeah, so, um, this, uh, we had a bit of cloud in the latter part. First part of it was actually pretty clear and by this time, we had, you know, the whole three and a half minutes or so, guys, to see that. So, um.
I can move there now.
Could you do that, just, yeah, okay, perfect. And so just to share with the family, um, and, uh, uh, my daughter and partner and architect and grandson, ten years old, just very, you know, very birthly, almost, um, in Quebec. Um, so. Yeah, so here's the equipment setup that I had. This is my, um, uh, electron scope and, uh, camera. And I was using, I just want to point out that if you, if you see this little thing as a top here, um, several years ago, somebody at the Falling Stars.
Joe Shields.
You, you, do you remember who it is?
Joe Shields.
Joe.
Shields.
Shield.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, Eric, I'm sure you know what the principle is. It's a bed, basically, a hole in the, in the head and, and another hole in the, in the foot. And, uh, you just line it up. And, uh, boy, it worked so well. Once I, I had to practice it first, but I, I went out almost every day with the sun, had a chance. And it made, made sure, so it didn't take long to set up, set this all up. And it all, I, I ran it all throughout the whole, uh, process. And, um, every time people would come, my grandson had me look at the, uh, at the open on. So then we were also doing some indirect things here. So as, uh, Kim and Kevin just showed ahead of time, we played with this. This is our tent, but actually, um, having, looking at the light coming through a, this is spruce tree in the backyard. Uh, this is the shadow on the ground. And, um, you can, these, there's a, uh, there's a huge number of these sort of slivers, um, here. This is a, um, this is a, it's really neat how that works. It's sort of like a whole lot of pinhole effects all coming together. This one here, so a friend of ours is Kathy Webb, is a member of the Houston Public National. She was, they decided to watch the eclipse from, eclipse from Melbourne Creek. And, um, they, um, showing this picture here, um, before, that before, birds all over the place. Swans and, and just flying around, it's, it's a huge birding place. Middle of the eclipse, nothing to be seen. The birds, within minutes, seconds, they all flew to their hiding places or in, in the trees and the forest. And, uh, and then as things ended and transitioned back to right light, as usual, everything came back to light again.
Did they, did they mention hearing the peepers come out?
Uh, yes, they did, yeah, the peepers responded. As, um, um, yeah, so they, um, yeah, the peepers, uh, uh, so were people experiencing them coming? I didn't hear the peepers, she was at, I didn't, I wasn't there. Were you, do you expect peepers to come out or to quiet, be quiet?
No, come out.
Come out, right, yeah, okay, that makes sense, because we, that's when you hear the light regularly. Yeah, there was, there's a lot of peepers here and, uh.
I would have thought so.
Yeah, and it was a really neat, uh, experience, yeah. She might, some people here may be members of KF and I think that made this discussion there.
Tomorrow night? Is that tomorrow night? KFM?
Yeah. So, um, now another, uh, so, uh, it's Janice Grant, also a member of the KF. And she, she, uh, she lives down on, right on the, uh, Lake Ontario. Um, this is, um, Amherst Island, that's the, uh, west end of Whupac. This is, so this is the southwest of the direction. And this is the, uh, at the very, very beginning, I didn't see it. But, um, I saw her just a few days ago and she showed me this picture and she kindly offered, like, a shared.
That's an awesome photo.
Yeah, it is.
So if you were a follower of Alan Dyer, Alan has posted a time lapse. And he captures this effect in three D in motion.
Ooh.
So he, you can, he's so close to the, uh, he was a little bit west of where we were. He was close enough to the cirrus that he caught the shadow shining into the cirrus, creating this three D effect in a time lapse. So look him up on, on, uh.
I wrote.
But that's a beautiful photo.
I think this one, one, one. Yeah, okay, now this one, here's another person, this is a student actually in, uh, Queege University in biology. This is from the top of, uh, Earl Hall, Biology. And he's looked at, he caught this, uh, this is a panorama shot. I don't, I don't have the details of what he was using. Uh, just, uh, within the last twenty-four hours, I just, I took them and, uh, so this is kind of neat. So this is the so-called smokestack down by the water. This is beautiful. It's in General Hospital. And so you sort of put a trajectory.
I don't know what angle it's at now.
Top of Earl Hall, you know.
Yes, there might, I'm not, there might be some digital manipulation going on in that.
Yes, he did admit that. He said, and he, uh, I, and he said, be sure to say that, so I'm saying. But I think, but it started out with a real picture. Yeah.
And it's a beautiful picture, it shows you the, the, the horizon beautifully and.
Yeah.
Implication and the corona and.
Yeah. And the thing's on. Okay. Yeah, so, um, uh, just, uh, I was attempting to, uh, I was just back here. This former of the, the time statue was taken a couple of weeks before the eclipse.
Where is that?
Uh, this is at Great Ward, uh, down by the.
Statue of Time.
You know, university residence is just, um.
I couldn't picture it, but now that you said it.
Yeah, Lake Ontario, we actually just live over this, right, right? So I think that's all I.
Yep. Okay, I think that's a good place to stop for five minutes. And we'll switch over to, oh, John, did you wanna?
Sure.
Talk about some things that you have over there on the table?
A quick, part of what Peggy and I were doing for the eclipse is, um, she did a bunch of, uh, talking to students at the school in Charvet Lake, getting them all prepped for the eclipse. And we were hosting a event in Kingston at the airport for airport staff, family, friends and people in the know. And so Peggy and I went down in the morning and set up. And one of the, we had about a hundred people there. And, uh, had some people from the Sunbury Rask fly in to observe the eclipse. And some other people flew in and some, uh, a lot of people came by. There were two police officers sent to the airport to help control the crowd. And so we invited, they were off by themselves, so we invited them over and they got to look through the binoculars. We had, uh, four sets of binoculars set up with, uh, solar filters and a card auto scope. And I had my camera, my Canon sixty D set up. So people were getting lots of, uh, views of the opening phases. Uh, we could see some sunspots and lots of questions, lots of oohs and ahs. And then clouds came and went, but we could see most of the opening stuff. And then clouds came and went, but we could see most of the opening stuff. And then totality happened and everything went dark, the birds in the trees got quiet. And everybody was just hollering and in awe. So it was a wonderful experience. One of the people that was involved is Joanne Gervais. Some of you may know she's an artist of some renown in the area. She did up a card of the eclipse beforehand. And on the back of it has some of the phases leading up to it. She has made these available for free to members of our center. So if anybody would like a copy, come over and check us out. We have some of our other work here on cards also available for free. And what she was doing during all of this is she was catching people looking through my equipment. So I have my own copy of what, my own record of what I did.
My ninety-one-year-old aunt was there too, so she got her caricature done and that's all which was done.
She was one of those who was getting it high and I don't really need to see that thing.
I made a special trip down to Kingston on the Saturday to convince her that she really needed. I had to show her what it looked like because she was thinking it was just, you know, like covered up and that was it. And we see this yellow ring, like the annulars, and I'm thinking, no, it's not.
There's so much more.
Some leaves. And since then, at home, it was ninety-nine point eight percent partial.
Yep.
Everybody, many of the businesses up there, Dave, they went out with their employees and stuff, even though it was not home. And they sat in the parking lot and watched the last part of it and listened to things and they were all, like, how cold it was. So they had a really good experience and they've all been reporting to us for the last two weeks.
Yeah.
Yes, we found a few of the businesses and places we were distributing some of the glasses to in Kingston and in Charvet Lake. They made sure all the staff, they basically closed out for a little while around totality and everybody went out to the parking lots. And using the glasses and the information they provided, got to see and experience this. And there's a lot of good remarks to make.
Awesome.
If I could share it. So like I say, if anybody wants to come by and take a look at the cards, we have lots.
That's the picture of John.
Elena?
Oh, yes.
Would this be a good time?
This is a great time.
Okay.
Bruce, we received a thank you card from the students that won the Leo Enright Award. And would you like to read it? Do you want to read one?
You can turn the room lights on if you'd like.
So her name is Lindsay Surra. And I haven't heard yet which school she's from. That information is not available during the judging time. I have written to the judge, to the head judge to provide that information. But I, as soon as that does come, I'll put together a description of what she actually did, which had to do with rockets. So let me read the card. Thank you for your interest in my project and the generous prizes. I look forward to reading the book and learning more about the stars in space. I had a lovely conversation with your club representative and greatly appreciated your suggestions. I am very grateful for your support. Sincerely, Lindsay Surra. Yes. So I do know she was in grade eight. And she, what really excited me about the project and I think Elena and also Graham, hey, was that she had done it with her own hands and not on the web. Of course, she'd used the web for information and to, you know, to put scientific slant on the project. And yeah, I mean, she had tried several different, many times she, you know, had different designs and tried to work it. So her dad was out there measuring the height using, you know, the angle of how the height was. And then do the trigonometry calculations and get it right down to the centimeters. And, and yeah, so I think she was able to outline each step that she learned from. And also each time was better. So yeah, it was a very exciting experience to interview her.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay, so let's take five minutes. Unless, are there any other people that wanted to present on the eclipse? Nope, okay, so we'll take five and then we'll come back with great.
His presentation. Philip, the last half we needed. So anybody who's had any interactions with RASC National will probably have met Dave Lane. I first met Dave at my first GA, which was nineteen eighty in Halifax. It was also, I think, his first GA. And we basically met and talked at every GA that I've been to since. Dave was, worked at St. Mary's University. He started out as the astronomy technician and the system administrator for the Physics and Astronomy Department. Then a few years ago, he was promoted to, or no, quite a few years ago, promoted to director of their observatory. And he retired a few years ago. While he was there, they had an old sixteen-inch Ealing telescope. I don't know if you know those, but those were built back in the old days of like electrical motors and, you know, big heavy material. And he completely rebuilt the guts of it, tore it all out, replaced it all with motors and computers and everything. Automated it all, hosted hundreds probably of community groups. Community groups like Brownies, schools, all kinds of things at the observatory. He wrote all the software for it to enable it to be operated via Twitter or Facebook. You could, you could send it an email or a tweet saying, you know, please take a picture of M-13. And if M-13 was below the horizon, it would say, I'm sorry, I can't do that, Dave. Following on from that, he made himself a little observatory, a little sort of doghouse observatory with a little opening roof and stuff. Outside sensors, so when it got dark and it was clear, it would automatically open up. It would observe all night. You could tell it to, you know, via Facebook and Twitter and stuff. He was an author on over a hundred publications. He was co-discoverer of three supernovae, had an asteroid named after him. I don't know if anybody here uses Earth-Centered Universe, the planetarium program. I've been using it for decades. You try and think of a single piece of software available now that's being supported, runs and is useful for thirty years. I mean, it's probably unique. Dave was the president and many other positions in the Halifax Center. He was the national president and many other positions. Helped for years with RASC IT and the mail lists. He was awarded the Ken Shilton Prize, the Chant Medal of the Service Award, President's Award, and Fellowship Award from the RASC. And as significant as all of those are, and the reason he got all of those is because he was also an extremely helpful guy, very knowledgeable. Always willing to give advice and take advice and put in the hours. I mean, just, he was always working. I guess a couple of decades ago, he took up sailing and in typical Dave style, put in countless hours of volunteering with the St. Margaret Sailing Club. Just this January, he was awarded an honorary doctor of science from St. Mary's University. And he and his lovely wife, Michelle, made a donation to the university. They've set up the Star Finder David Lane Astronomy Outreach Program, which is intended to help underserved and indigenous communities with that astronomy education. Dave was diagnosed with cancer and after nine months and at the age of only sixty years, he passed away on March twenty-fourth. He was a giant in the RASC and we all miss him terribly. So back to something somewhat more cheerful. I do not, I never paid any attention to that foolishness. All I know is I wrecked one, Dave's the man who's.
You're Dave's, it was Dave's.
See, it was the Royal Astronomical Society of Daves.
I know, Dave Carter.
Ours is Rick's Astronomical Society of Canada, and I'm one. So we too went to see the eclipse. We had all kinds of different plans. At first, we were thinking of coming down to Kingston to help out the Queens. And then we decided that was just going to be a nightmare with the traffic. So we decided to go to Ganonakwe on the waterfront. And then the forecast started looking not so good. So we decided to head to Cornwall. You see it on here, but anyway.
It's there.
In there. And, oh, there it is. So basically, first thing I did in the morning was I got up and confirmed that, yes, the cloud was definitely coming in and it was going to be worrisome. And then I started seeing, looking at the traffic. And at seven fifteen in the morning, west of Oshawa, there was nobody on the four oh one yet. My impression is that, like, the highway should have been jammed with people going to work by that time, nothing. So we decided we would just start heading down and we would head for Cornwall. And as we were going by Cornwall, there was still no significant traffic. So we figured, well, we might as well just keep going. And the cloud was obviously going to be an issue. So we said, let's just keep going. And we went up and we went around south of Montreal and everything was basically excellent. Up until we tried to take the ten down towards Sherbrook and stuff. And that intersection right there was a nightmare. We got off, sort of off on a ramp and spent maybe half an hour going like a half a kilometer towards the real exit. And finally said, this is dumb, just pulled back onto the highway and continued off up to number one twelve. Which had a couple of minor slowdowns. And we just kept going until we came to Granby as we were heading out of Granby, intending maybe to continue. It's all trees, I thought, we've left the agricultural area behind. I don't want to be stuck behind trees. So we just, around, stopped at a park in Granby. And where there were people. And we set up on the edge, there's a nice little river through town, expands here out into a lake. We set up my little telescope, I got my Cheerio Box viewer and a radio. We tried listening for AM radio signals, didn't do anything. My colander, my daughter, my wife's chair, she took this picture.
I was going to say, you forgot her.
This is a view, so we're right on the edge of this multi-used path. All the time we were out there, there were people going by on their bicycles, looking around like, what are all these strange people doing? Like, how you can be that detached, I don't know. This lady here, we nicknamed Madame La Fleur, I'll show you why later. This little roof thing here, that's where most of the people were set up over there.
You had clouds.
There was clouds, yes. How to observe an eclipse, running around trying to find your camera, trying to do settings, messing about like I do. Nice comfy chair, layback, soak it all in. Here's some of the other people that were over there, so you can see small telescopes and some telephoto lenses. Another fellow just sit on the curb, enjoy the eclipse. Couple more telescopes and more people in lawn chairs. These two kids spent the whole time up on the hippopotamus, just happened to be hippopotamus in the park. And this is Victoria and I watching the eclipse. You can see her interesting optical arrangement. She puts the glasses, the eclipse glasses up, so she just flicks up and down depending on whether she wants to see the sun or not. And this is, this is us imitating sort of millennials. This is how millennials observe an eclipse. They're following. This is Madame La Fleur. You can see she made this nice flower on a stick handle. There's little holes cut out for the eyes and then you just punch holes through the foil and it makes nice little crescents on the ground. Which was kind of interesting because beforehand, they were nice little smiley crescents and then afterwards, they were the little sad crescents. And there she is demonstrating its use. And of course, we had to try the colander. I'll give you a hint, when you get a colander, when you buy a colander, consider your solar observing, don't get one with so many holes. You couldn't hold it very far back where the suns all started to blend in. So.
So you were straining to see the sun. Somebody had to say something.
So I tried some pictures through my scope with my phone and I was quite surprised, quite pleased that, you know, you can actually see the double spot and then the other two little ones there. Another one a little later, just as this, the double spot was being covered. My daughter could see that spot naked eye, which I certainly couldn't. And this is basically the view of totality with my DSLR. You can see it's blown out, so I'm going to put a little black circle in there just so it looks right. These guys were quite interesting, the roofing on the building right across from us. And you'd see them up there. Bang, 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 bang. Bang, 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 bang. And then during totality, they stopped, tools down, they just stood there and ogled the thing.
Animal behavior.
Yeah. And then as soon as the eclipse was over, they were back to working hard. There's Victoria, her glasses off, enjoying totality. She was, she was, my wife was the official photographer. Victoria was the official, overexcited one when it was done, she was.
How many eclipses per?
Second, second one, yeah. We went, we took her to Germany for the ninety-nine eclipse. And this is just, this is actually a frame out of a video. I was sort of trying to do the, you know, like the video with the noise and stuff. Except, all the groups I get in with, they're all more like the, oh, oh, no swearing, no jumping. So anyway, street lights on, everybody being awed. That was my daughter's shot of totality, a little grainy. And there's a nicer one showing, it wasn't quite that dark in reality, but it shows everything. This is what we would have had if we'd stayed home. This is from the neighbors. And so they did actually, you know, there was holes enough that I gave up glasses out up and down the road. And so everybody saw totality cleared out through. And so everybody saw totality, cleared out for a minute or two around totality. And stories. This is one of the guys in Ottawa, he was down somewhere in Quebec and setting up the day before, checking out the site. And this lady went by with her chicken on a leash, taking it for a walk. And so they said, come back tomorrow and see the eclipse. So they brought the chicken out and let the chicken have a look.
Now I notice that there's no solar filter on that. Are we having fried chicken?
I don't know. Couple of other stories I heard from the Ottawa group. One guy tried putting his eclipse glasses on and then looking with his binoculars, heard a hole through the eclipse glasses very quickly, fortunately. He managed not to get his eyesight destroyed. Another guy was, was observing with his filtered telescope but was bending down to look through his finder scope and somebody grabbed him. Ah! So there's, there's.
Are you suggesting there should be a test for telescope ownership?
It's a panicky situation, mistakes happen. So. Any questions?
And how was the drive home?
The drive home, we figured about, we lost maybe an hour to traffic compared to what sort of Google was predicting and then maybe an hour and a quarter on the way home. The main problem coming home was the toll booth, the toll bridge across the Saint Lawrence. Other than that, it was, it was pretty good.
And all the Ontario license plates in the line.
You know, it took us a long time to see any Ontario plates on the way there. I thought like, why aren't people going to see this thing? And then going home, we saw more, because we were south of you and stuff. Like we went by Graham. But it was, I couldn't believe there weren't more people flocking to see there. Well, I think it's, we were on the road at six in the morning, so maybe we were just out there.
She said, well, I can see ninety-nine, forty-eight, that's good enough.
No, it's not.
One thing I did notice, I don't know why this is not going properly into slide moves. Anyway, it's fine. One thing I did notice in Quebec was the number of electric vehicles. Obviously far more in Quebec. I saw my, I saw three or four of my first ever Audi electrics, saw IONIQ sixes that I've never seen in Ontario.
Thank you, Doug Ford.
So sky this month for April. This is a photo I took of an Abel galaxy cluster, four twenty-six, I think, I can't remember.
A constellation, isn't it?
I don't know. But this, I think, was a, was a Starlink pass.
Thank you, Elon.
Yeah, kind of, kind of neat thing. All, all the sort of orangey, yellowish things are all galaxies. There's probably three or four hundred galaxies in there. Local events. Queens is not putting up their seminars and stuff until like a few, a week or so before they happen. A A D S O webinars, we just missed the April or just passed the April one and the May one will be after our next meeting. But the spectroscopy section, if you're interested in astronomical spectroscopy, they have a meeting of their section every month.
It's the same day as our meeting.
Right. Scrub that, nobody's allowed to go. L and A Deep Sky Viewing Area, Fourth of May, astro photographers assemble. They also have a laser guided sky tour and observe the moon night. And again, either just past or just after our next meeting. North Frontenac Deep Sky Preserve, fifth of May, the Aquarian Meteor Shower Maximum. So they're having an event. April hours of darkness, there's getting to be a lot less. And the sun, of course, is getting higher and reaches solar noon at about one o'clock. Sky events, nineteenth and twentieth of April, Uranus and Neptune are very close in the sky, low in the west northwest shortly after sunset. The twenty-first of April, low Lyra meteor shower peaks. Unfortunately, it's like the day, two days before new, before full moon, so it's going to be a pretty poor showing. Twenty-third of April is full moon. Twenty-ninth of April, Neptune is going to be very close to Mars, very low in the east southeast as civil twilight begins. So you'll absolutely need a telescope to see Neptune. Early May up to our next meeting, last quarter moon. Planets right now are poor. Jupiter and Uranus are disappearing in the sunset and the other ones are coming up out of the sunrise, but they're still, because of the tilt in the eclipse, they're very low, so they're not, not good viewing. But over that four days, the moon goes by every morning. You can watch it going by Saturn, Mars, Mercury and possibly Venus. The eight Aquarian Meteor Shower on the fifth and sixth is actually, it's a fairly broad peak, so either morning is a good time to see it. New moon on the seventh and Mercury at greatest elongation west on the ninth of May. Here's a picture showing the moon, Saturn, Mars, Mercury and Venus. And you can see the, the sun is only just below the horizon and Venus is rising.
What day is it? What day is it?
Bottom right.
Yep, third of May, at nine forty-three universal. So major planets, Jupiter's low in the west, so is Uranus. Saturn, Mars and Neptune are very low in the morning sky during twilight. Interesting that Mars and Saturn are exactly the same brightness. Venus and Mercury extremely low in the morning twilight. This is on the, the sort of the fifteenth, sixteenth. Notice the magnitude of Mercury. Mercury was right close to the sun during the eclipse and Madame La Fleur actually asked me, she says, where's Mercury? It should be right there. And I said, yeah, but unfortunately Mercury is on the near side of the sun. It was close to conjunction. So we're looking at the dark side of Mercury, so it was like mag four and a half. I don't have any pictures of it. But if we go back here, Mercury actually moves quite quickly. So during April, there's a point at which it's between Venus and the sun, but because of the tilts of the orbit and stuff, it's actually far enough north that even though it's closer to the sun, it actually rises before Venus. Not much happening in asteroids. Six HEB is at opposition on the twenty-sixth. Any questions? I don't think there's any eclipses this month.
When are the next eclipses?
Well, I started looking and it's not very pretty.
It's a partial in twenty twenty-five here.
Iceland, Iceland, Iceland.
The twenty twenty-five one is about three quarters over at sunrise. So you get like sixteen minutes of it or something. Yeah, there's another one then. For totals. For total, there's, there's one that starts like in Greenland, goes all the way across the Atlantic and into northern Spain, if you want to do the Camino. You know, you can, along with a hundred million other people who are doing the Camino while trying to see an eclipse at sunset in Spain, across the North Atlantic.
Okay, how, how about the Australian Outback in twenty-eight?
That one, yes, if you're willing to go to Australia.
Five or six or seven minutes long, something ridiculous.
It's, yes, it's a realistic option. Other than that, there's things like, you know, Congo, Somalia, Afghanistan. You know? Gibraltar would be nice, but don't expect to travel if it starts to cloud over. I would, I, that eclipse, I would tend to go for like Morocco or Tunisia. Anyway.
Thanks, Rick. Well, that is, yes, thank you. That is the program for this evening. I don't have slides to refer to, so I'll try to do this from memory. We have a Facebook account, we have a YouTube account where this video may end up pending approval by the recorder, the recorder's associate, the associate to the associate and so on and so on.
The weather, the.
We have, our next meeting is May the eighth, I believe, here. And there will be an email going out if you're interested in joining us for dinner at some unyet determined location, maybe the same one, maybe not. That requires membership on our email list. If you're not on it, speak to me and I'll get you out of it. I think everyone here is on it. Thank everyone for the material that you presented tonight. It was a lot of fun doing faculty with us. Certainly one of the highlights of my life, absolutely right up there with, you know, other things, but that was unbelievable. So we'll see you next time.